Okay, if we can stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business tonight will be to elect the person that's next to me as chair and then vice chair. So I will start by opening nominations for chair of the Goffstown School Board. Do I have any nominations?
If she will accept, I'd like to nominate Diana Parte for chair.
I have a second. Both of us nominated?
You actually have to answer the question.
I will accept.
Do we have any other nominations for chair? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Do we have our closing nominations? All those in favor of Diana as chair, please signify by raising your hand. So you've nominated, are you going to vote for yourself or abstain?
I'll go ahead abstain.
You can vote yourself.
As a process again.
It's a majority.
We agreed on the, it's just a vote.
Yep.
It's not an I, no.
Congratulations Diane. Would you like to take over for vice chair nomination?
I'll accept nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Keith Allard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Are there any other nominations?
I will accept two.
Well, no, I didn't say it very loud.
And you will accept Keith?
Yeah, I'll accept him.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote for Keith Allard as vice chair. All in favor? Or a matter of process?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to vote yourself?
Absolutely.
I'd like to change my vote.
I'm for reelection, you know, why wouldn't I?
Okay.
I'll take my check and off your hand.
All right, so I need a motion for the approval of the 3-4-13 school board minutes.
She's trying to stay close to me.
Anybody would like to make that motion, Hank? For the approval of the 3-4-13 minutes? I need a second. Seconded by Keith. Do we have any other changes? Comments, deletions? I had one question on the minutes when I read them. And I just need to get to the spot. It seemed like the vote, it didn't add up to those in attendance, I didn't know if we had missed somebody. It was on the bottom, area agreement. The vote was 3-0-4. And it seems like somewhere we were missing someone.
Which one was that?
Area.
Oh, okay. I don't think anybody left.
We had eight people, but three plus four equals seven. So, um... I'm not sure who wasn't counted in what way.
Well, um... Would it be 3-0-4? Because a four would be abstained.
It should be 3-4-0.
At least.
Mm-hmm. So we're...
We missed somebody.
If they voted no, this is...
The area.
No, we haven't. I have to read this again. Oh, that's to, actually, that was the last one for the...
I just think the math is likely since we listed who voted no, it should have been 4-4.
I think it was defeated, so...
So if, if we can, does, so Ginny, Dan, Lori, and Hank, the three of you, because Lori's not here, do you remember voting no on that?
Yes.
And so then it would be Philip.
Aye.
Diane.
This was the letter, right?
You abstained, so we missed the abstention.
So it'd be 3-4-1.
Any other comments, changes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Seven opposed. Abstentions? One abstention?
Abstain.
Oh, and Suzanne's abstaining as well. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes for non-public dated 3-4-13. First by Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Philip. Any changes there?
As long as we can thank the person who was kind enough to record these. But that would be a comment as opposed to a change.
It would be, it would be. All in favor? Oh, Hank?
It looks like, it looks like reading those, we went into non-public, came out, and went into non-public again.
We did.
And I can't see where we came out of it twice.
That would be in the regular board meeting minutes.
And we came out of non-public twice?
Yep.
I can't, I can't see the motion to come out of the second non-public.
Yeah, at 10:20.
Because those are sealed.
Yeah, it came out at 10:20. And then you sealed those minutes. And then you go to the meeting. On the bottom of each line, for your minute, the right minutes.
Are we good? All in favor of approving those minutes as presented?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Yes, so all opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yes Suzanne?
I'm having difficulty hearing because of paper flipping again.
I'm sitting in front of the phone, sorry.
I don't know what you want here, let me try this.
Will that work better?
Can you still hear Diane? Well, she's got a thought.
Why don't you put it, can you put it in front of me?
It's the cable.
It only goes so far. Because I'm not flipping.
You want to switch?
Suzanne, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you, but I can't hear Diane, she speaks too softly.
Okay, how's this now?
Oh, okay.
Is that better? Excellent. Okay, we have the correspondence folder. And in the correspondence folder, it looks like we just have a substitute report that will pass around. Commendations and good news.
Well, I'd like to officially recognize Lori in her, I believe, nine years of service, if I remember correctly. She did not win reelection, but do want to recognize her. And I would imagine that in a future meeting, we'll actually present her with her gift as for her servitude. And then I'd like to welcome the two new ones, Rita and Ben, to our board. Well, when you're on the board long enough, it's going to feel like that again, sir. But, um, I want to welcome Ben and Rita, Rita, excuse me. Glad to have you guys as additions.
Thank you.
Hope you speak your mind, it would be great.
And if there's anything you have questions about, it's only just asked.
Okay, definitely.
So, I have the news.
Start.
I'm not with you. Um, we had three teams go to the destination imagination and all three placed. So we had imagination domination team, and they came in first in the wind visible challenge. The second team, the Duck Tapers, came in second place in their challenge Twisterama. And team Galactic Dogs came in fifth place in their challenge called In Disguise. The music department has some notes last Wednesday. Students, student musicians put on a fantastic performance at our annual March Arts Festival. We had approximately 400 visitors in the building who enjoyed our evening of great music. We also had student artwork on display courtesy of Mr. Kilmester's and Mrs. Roy's art classes. All students involved did a great job. And then on Saturday, this past Saturday, the seventh and eighth grade band, seventh and eighth grade chorus, seventh and eighth grade strings, all from MBMS, met at Campbell High School in Litchfield, New Hampshire, to attend the NHMEA Large Group Festival. All three groups performed for a panel of judges who gave them a letter grade based on their performances. And the chorus and orchestra received an A, and the band received a B. So that was, that's great.
That is great.
Student government sold I Have a Dream Stars, which they had put up in the Hilltop. They were 25 cents a piece for students, and they were able to raise $150 to purchase a backpack for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And it gets filled with all the items that the person's going to need to make their special wish come true. So usually they're traveling and stuff like that, and so they, the Make-A-Wish organization will fill it with whatever that person is going to need for their trip. We had Hat Day last Friday. It was our first Pride Day, so we're going to be doing a Pride Day the third Friday of every month. And student government collected $277 in donations that will be used for the PBIS prizes and recollections for the rest of the school year. And then the PBIS bathroom rollout begins this coming Monday. And PBIS team is working hard to plan out a rollout, recognition, and fun activities for the remainder of the school year. They're, they're planning an after-school activity and a rollout and a recognition for every month, on top of the Pride Day. So they sort of have a lot going on. It's a busy calendar.
Sounds good.
But I think it'll be fun.
We have some good news from the elementary schools. From Maple, we're hosting the book fair this week during the school day. The student council is sponsoring a spirit day on Friday. The vote during the voting time was, they chose to bring a favorite stuffed animal to school day, so that'll happen on Friday. Father Daughter Ball is this Saturday in the Maple Tree Cafe. And during the week of March 25th, this Maple Avenue students will be engaged in our PFT-sponsored Artist Residence Program. Jaclyn and Dudley Lachman from Two Fiddles will be joining each of the physical education classes during the week to teach students the art of calling dances. And they'll also be performing a traditional barn dance with help from our students as a culminating event during the school day on Friday, March 29th. Okay. And Maple Avenue has met the Fisher Katz Reading Challenge for, of 100% school-wide participation, again this year, second year in a row. Each child has read, had to read five books and had in a reading log. And we're now going to be included in a drawing to possibly win $3,000 for the school. Glenn Lake had some good news as well. They had an excellent teacher workshop day during which they held their preschool role model visitation and analyzed the new half-kindergarten pacing guide based on the Common Core State Standards. It's a new document provided by the Department of Education. And Glenn Lake wanted to report that they had an unprecedented number of potential role models this year, 35 children. And they were able to accommodate 25 who were chosen by lottery. That's our good news.
Good, thank you.
I've got a couple of things from the high school. Couple different little competitions that you don't hear much about. The GHS FBLA, Future Business Leaders of American Life Smarts team made it to the New Hampshire State Competition. Life Smarts is an educational tool that develops the consumer and marketplace knowledge and skills of teens, and teaches teens consumer literacy and personal finance, consumer rights, responsibilities, et cetera. And congratulations to the GHS team, Dale Kneep, Nopla Vikas, Mackenzie Duvall, Justin McNeil, and Anna Etienne. The Latin Club, a big focus of their weekly after-school meetings, has been for preparation for various exams sponsored by the Junior Class School League. And they just got the results back for the etymology exam, and they're thrilled to find that three of their 16 participants earned bronze medals, and they were all freshmen, Jack Henderson, Bryce Mellon, and Nick Stafford. And then there's some community service stuff that we don't, you don't hear much about. For example, student council's planning to serve patrons at the new Horizon Soup Kitchen, and continuing to visit the nursing home here in town. And the leadership class is working on connection with the International Institute in Manchester to help with tutoring refugee children. So we'll keep you updated on that stuff.
Sure.
I have a question Diane.
Yes.
On Sunday, there was a competition at the State House for poetry reading. I heard about this because I was fortunate enough to get some time off from work and attended the luncheon on Friday. And thank you teachers again for helping us with that. I will leave that go with that. Do you know what the outcome was?
I heard, I haven't heard much about it. Was that deep? And he advanced to the state?
Yeah, he did. I don't, I don't think he won, I don't know if he placed or anything, but I do know he made it there.
I went online to see if they had the results, and I couldn't find it anywhere. And I did that after school had closed, so I couldn't ask. I will find out and get, I'll update you in my script.
Kind of excited, laid-back excited.
So I have some news. There's a couple of things that Mr. McBride had announced, like a couple days after our last meeting, so there's a couple of older stuff. The Strings Orchestra went to the National Conference of the American String Teachers Association in Providence, Rhode Island on the second with Muriel Orchestra. And they are a couple of students, it was in conjunction with the middle school. But Dante Agayu, Kaylee Cavanero, Casey Donahue, Megan Flanders, Megan Minar, Abby Poloney, Josh Teed, and Iris Zing. And they were all violin or viola players in ninth and 10th grade, and one junior. So that's pretty exciting, they were able to play in front of everyone. And so for sports, the Scholar-Athlete Award Ceremony was today. At the Capital Center for the Arts, we had a guest speaker, Lee Wald Vogel, and a proclamation presentation by Governor Maggie Hassan. She made an appearance at the end. And so from GHS, Erin Trinka, Brianna Larochelle, Breon Turcot, Abby Cook, Andrew Creashen, Mitchell Juno, Jennifer Cashin, Melissa Lockwood, Jake Mount, Carrie Satek, Kelsey Benson, Rosalie Edmonds, Melissa Norton, Kim McPhail, Molly Goldstein, Sarah Pierce, Stasha Swiattis, Taylor St. Peter, Megan Knoll, Mandy Warias, and me. So we all, we all went. It was a really fun day, and it was a really great ceremony. So all of us were recognized as Scholar-Athletes, so that was a big day. For the Special Olympics, this was older news. Justin Nikias earned a gold in the slalom, and then the super giant slalom, and a silver in the giant slalom. So he took home a couple awards. And there was another Goffstown student who earned three bronze in the same event, and that was the fourth and fifth of March at Waterville Valley. So it was pretty exciting. So for the winter sports wrap-up, girls' basketball, their final record was 12-6 and lost, a pretty tough loss in overtime for the first round. But they had the best record in 20 years for basketball, for girls' basketball, which is pretty exciting.
That's wonderful.
Moving in the right direction.
So for hockey, they were 10-7-1, and they had a first-round win, 6-1, and then they lost to the first team, Merrimack. So that was hard, but they made it really far, so congratulations to them. For bowling, Beau Gerskus placed fourth, I mean first, and Rachel Desriot placed fourth for the final competition. And I think, I think that, oh, the science fair, that was this past Thursday. So I can't remember how many students, but there were, we had a lot of groups representing us at the science fair. So we went to Concord, to NHTI, and so we all had our poster boards. And we presented our science fair projects, and we, we got a lot of awards. There was a lot of ties this year, which is quite unusual, like a lot, a lot of the categories all had ties, but we had a lot of winners. So I don't have the names with me, but...
That's terrific.
Thank you.
Any other commendations, good news? Seeing none, public comment? No public comments, we will go on to our standing committee reports. HR, do we have anyone to report on HR?
I guess I'm the, I'm the only one left standing. We're having a meeting.
You just did, actually, but I didn't hear you express it. Do you have public comment?
I do, I just...
Okay, Hank, do you mind if I go ahead?
Of course not.
Do you mind? I'm Angie Batty, I live in Shirley Park here in Goffstown, resident, have multiple children in the school system. And I just, with all the changes that have come our way in the last week, with Dunbarton leaving, resignations with Ms. Buckley and Mr. Hunt, I just think it's really important that we, that you take your time and thoughtfulness in replacing Mr. Hunt, and that you make sure that you get the right person up there for those kids. They need somebody that can sort of bring that school back to life again. They're, these kids are struggling. And so I, I charge you with really being very careful and not rushing to judgment, or rushing to pick just anybody to do it very thought. And then I have a question, I don't really need the answer to it. With SAU, with Dunbarton leaving, is it possible for us to look at the SAU budget? And we potentially don't need that huge budget at SAU any longer, the three superintendents if Dunbarton leaves us, but we can diminish some of that. Because it is my understanding that that budget is larger than the entire fire department budget in this town. So I just, I think we need to take, all the changes that have come our way, we need to be sort of, think outside of the box, you know, with the school renovations being turned down, and we need to maybe just throw all that stuff away and relook at it.
Thank you.
Would you mind if I responded to the process for an SAU budget so that the public who heard the comment would be, it'll only take less than a minute.
Less than a minute, sure, go ahead.
So basically, what, what happens with an SAU budget? The SAU budget is formulated by the three towns together, through all three boards together. And that's done in the fall. Right now, the vote, apparent vote in Dunbarton to leave won't happen for another year. So there's already a budget in place that's going to be in place for at least the 13-14 year. So it's the next formulation of the budget, and there's a comment period that can be done. And so be aware of that when it comes up in December or January time period.
Of 2013 or 2014?
Of 14. It'll be December 2013 or January 2014. There will be a public comment period for you to come and make that comment at that time. That'll be the appropriate place for it. How do I do, under a minute?
Yeah, I'm sure you look fine.
And that's the budget that will be in, in effect for when Dunbarton is gone.
Right.
Right, because they, they essentially are leaving, are starting their 2014 spring, like that graduation year, or?
After, correct.
Correct. 2013-2014 year? Yes.
Just remember, it may get more complex, because they may have students here still. So the notion that it may be easier, it may actually be more complex, because Dunbarton will have students here that need to be managed and there. So it, it may be a little more complex.
When are those, when are those, like, who makes those decisions of whether we say all those students must go?
Yeah, the boards will need to negotiate that.
Right.
Yeah, that's still in process.
Just to frame it up a little bit, and again, this is information to put in your pocket and hold on to for, for a little bit. Your point's well taken. But there are approximately 200 students who are 10% of the relevant population, about. I could be off by 1%, one way or the other. So when you look at the contribution of those students to the total population of students in the Goffstown School District, it's below, well below 10%. So as we assess the, the needs for what the SAU does for both of the communities, and at least for some period of time, also whatever students are residual students that are tuitioned here from Dunbarton. And there will be some, but at this juncture, we don't know what that will look like. We'll have a better idea sort of a year ahead of time. That's the framework that we'll be looking at. So certainly, there will be a decrease in the aggregate number of students. How it will impact total services is a bit of a guess at this time. But the number, the impact, is somewhere in terms of total students at below 10% for the aggregate student body of the population.
Okay, we need to get back, did, I had closed out public comment, but now it looks like you have a comment.
We were over here chit-chatting, we kind of...
Oh, see, this is what happens. You need to pay attention.
Chair is already recommended.
Hi, Kristy, go ahead.
My name's Kristy Garrison, I just had a couple comments. I had one consideration, if we have a snow day tomorrow, is there any way you can consider other than going to June 28th, a way to, like, expand the day?
I won't be talking about that.
Okay. And the other thing is following what, what Angie said, I'm sorry Dunbarton pulled out. I'm sorry as a citizen, and as a parent, and as a voter, and I think we're in a mess. Things get messy, and that's just the way life is. I'd like to see us move forward. I'd like to maybe think outside the box. I was the co-president of the Grizzly Football Club last year, and we had a night game at Saint Ace. It was our first night game at Saint Ace. It was extremely successful. I'd like to see us maybe look into those type of ventures, because I don't think we're going to get funding for a new field and track. So maybe, and I'd be willing to be on a committee, maybe form a committee with some different ideas, and look into ways of meeting some of our needs without necessarily having large expenditures.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm sorry, they're usually on the, the chair waiting for you.
Stacy was sort of excited she gets to open that meeting there.
No, I don't have any.
Do you have public comment?
I do.
You do? We'll work on getting you an agenda. I apologize, I thought. You have that?
Since I can also be a member of the public.
I have them ready.
I'm speaking as an informed member of the public, Philip Pancho, 43 Pineapple Ave., Manchester slash in Argyle. Thanks very much for coming tonight. I appreciate your individual and your special interest. Just so that we know what some of those difficulties are, there were a couple of decisions that occurred.
Can I remind you, you've got three minutes?
Yep.
Okay.
Diane, you might need it.
So, so one of the things that didn't pass was the school board's budget, which was about $600,000 above the default. So we traded savings of $600,000 for a revenue stream arguably, if, if, mind you, if it had any impact on the decision in Dunbarton, for a $20 million stream of income over the life of that area agreement. So one of the things that you sort of need to be mindful of is that we've got a bunch of things on the plate going forward. Your teachers and your support staff have been without a contract for two years. Eventually, they're probably going to expect, or at least would like to, get raises. And I think it's appropriate, when you consider doing that, to understand that part of giving more compensation is making yourself attractive. And I would guess that over two years, we've become a little bit less attractive. I'm not going to ask you, because I really don't want, I don't want to put you on the spot. But another year, we'll become less attractive. Those things cost money. Our greatest obligation as a district is not for our buildings, not for our sports, not for our supplies, but is for our personnel. And it's interesting, I think that one of the messages that your friends up the river might have gotten from the vote of this community was that they weren't quite sure how much they supported public... they supported public education here. So, as you go forward and as you talk to your friends about your individual interests, be they special or for the district completely, one of the things that you might talk about is how attractive we are to staff, how attractive we are to teachers, and how much we support public education. So, I would ask you, whether you're a member of the board or a member of the public, to keep this in mind because you're gonna have, over the next 10 years, in round, small, very conservative numbers because things change over time, $20 million less revenue to spend on educating not very fewer students.
$2 million, Philip. You said 20?
No, I said, I meant $20 million.
Over 10 years, yeah.
Over 10 years. Okay? And that number is actually gonna grow. Lots of things are gonna grow. But, it sounds so much more dramatic when you say 20 million instead of 2 million. But, it sort of drives home, drives home a point. Right now, we know that there's some things that are gonna cost more and we're gonna have less. And the reality of that in a community that hasn't expanded its commercial tax base much in the time that I've been in town is that the only way that you get support for that is from all of us who own homes here. So, your decision is what that asset means to you, because, by the way, it is directly linked to the embracing of, and support for public education, because that's what parents wanna know about when they move here, and what you choose to do. So, I would encourage you to get on board to support public education, either for your specific area of interest or for all of them. And understand that there are challenging times upcoming, and we knew that six months ago, just like we know it today. It's just much clearer to us today.
Thank you.
If I use more than three minutes, I apologize.
Okay, hang on, because we now have.
You opened the Pandora box.
Oh, we did open up Pandora's box here. I have other public comments. If I could just, really, we do need to stick to three minutes and subjects on the agenda. If we may, please.
Angie Batty, please, a second agenda. Everybody that I speak to, of all different ages, age groups, want to support public schools. Yes, I do believe we need to take care of the people in the school system who work there, but I think our number one concern should be the children, the students themselves. A lot of people haven't had raises in two years. A lot of people haven't had raises, a lot more than that. A lot of people have had cuts in pay, decrease in salaries, decreases in hours. A lot of families have had to rethink how they do their own things at home and prioritize and things like that. And I'm just thinking, I know myself, we've had to really think out of the box at home to really get our priorities done. And I'm just hoping that as a town, we can do the same here. We might need to do things differently. And I'm just saying that I think we, I'm willing to go broke over education, with a few things in my bag of go-broke over. But, I just think we need to rethink how we're doing things. And I'm hoping that this body will be just that. Thank you.
Thank you. And did we have one last public comment? Ms. Stekowicz?
Jane Stekowicz, 18 Horizon Drive. I'd also just like to thank Dunbarthen for all the years they were with us. It was wonderful. We've all met great people, made great friends. Our kids met wonderful students. And I think what we can take from this, though, we can thank Dunbarthen that they did allow changes to happen at Mountain View. I'm hard pressed to think if they weren't thinking of leaving and eventually did leave, that we would still be in the same predicament that we are at Mountain View. So, I wanna thank Dunbarthen for sparing that and getting that going.
Thank you. Jenny?
I, we can call this public comment for Jenny, but Jenny McKinnon. In thinking over the voting and the predicaments that we are in right now, I think Goffstown really needs to change some of their focus in supporting the schools and start being so divisive about schools and getting behind the good things that we do here and broadcasting the good things that we do here and supporting our budget. I know things are hard, but we passed the town budget this year. We did not pass the school budget. That was a huge message to our sending districts. And if we have a product that we wanna sell, then we better start talking about the good product that we have instead of seeing a newspaper article, a TV show, a radio show, whatever, representatives talking negatively about our school systems. And give people on board, instead of taking pop shots at our education system, getting behind the good things that we do here, supporting the budget even though it's tough. I mean, we don't have a jillion dollars coming into our house, but if education is important to you, then you have to make sure it happens. And you can't depend upon somebody else to do it. And if we're gonna sell and keep New Boston, then we have to make sure. Because one thing that they're looking at is if we support education in Goffstown. And I believe the past four years, we have not. We have had a default budget. And I think you can use the economy to a certain extent, and then you have to say, we're responsible in the United States. We have public education and we have to support it. So, sometimes we just have to take responsibility for that as hard as it may be. But, you know, I think the message that we sent this year was a real bad one. The town budget, okay. School budget, no. And we're asking you to pay money to send your kids here. But, we're not going to support the budget. So, I think that's something that we as taxpayers, board members, community members, children, parents, really have to think, we need to put a different look forward for ourselves.
Okay, thank you. And I do wanna thank the members of the public for coming out tonight to share your views. Jane, did you?
I didn't know if I could respond to what she said.
You know, it's really, the public comment's not a time for public debate. And I kind of feel like I've let it get.
You gotta debate going, so.
I know. I've kinda opened the door here, but I also need to rein our meeting in. I apologize. But, I do thank you for coming and for sharing your views. I do appreciate it when people take the time to come out and be engaged, definitely. I do need to go on to standard committee reports. Hank, you were starting HR.
Well, I said, I'm the only one left, so I guess I'm doing it. Having our next meeting on the 8th of April. We have two policies that are up this second read under old business. Get to that then. And we have two policies, or one policy and one regulation under first read on new business, so. Take it then.
Okay. So, we'll do it then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Follow the agenda.
Planning on communications, did not meet this week. This is an off week. We meet again on April 1st. There is a chance that I need to bump that to 6:30 because I have a Honeywell follow-up meeting. But, currently, it is scheduled for 6 o'clock. Curriculum and education?
Yes. We had a meeting recently where we had an overview of the adult education program, which really does a lot of things, the gap program, does a lot of things that I'm always surprised about in the number of people who get a New Hampshire State diploma through that so that they can better the jobs that they have, the kids who get their GEDs. And a lot of enrichment and marks that are improved, courses that are accepted because they've come back and done the course and gotten the credit, as well as all of the enrichment activities for anyone in the community. It's just a great program. And to hear him talk about it and the real successes of people who've really bettered their life because of that program, not only as an enrichment and, you know, learning something new that's interesting to them, but the people that have actually gone on and gotten a degree that will, will help their families with jobs and stuff. It's a really important, a really important program that we do. It's pretty much operates in the black because of a grant and tuition that's charged. I think it's a great resource that we have here for people and certainly for anybody watching. Make sure you check out the papers and check in at the school to see what is offered because there's a lot of really interesting things going on. The other thing that we did was revise our charge. And everyone has a copy of that in front of them. Basically, there are just a couple of little changes of things that we do as opposed to what it says that we do in better language to make more sense. So, in front of you is our new charge.
Just Dan and Rita, just for your information, one of the things we've been working on all year is kind of revising what our subcommittees do, like just getting a better description so that when we have new board members and we tell you what the subcommittee is, it's a really clear understanding of what that subcommittee does. So, this is just a revision to one of them.
And if anybody reviews it and has a comment, or let me know. But, I think otherwise, it will be asked again.
Thank you. Budget committee report. Looks like the meeting night has changed to Thursdays. So, they have their next meeting this Thursday. Is it the third Thursday of the month? No. Elementary facility? Do we have anything?
Yeah, I can, Jennifer is no longer here. She's very vital on that committee. Obviously, the bond did not pass. We're planning to host a meeting for basically debriefing and going over what we did right and what we did wrong and looking to receive a charge from the school board at this point.
Okay.
So, if possibly could be discussed in the next month or two as to what you'd like us to do, we will gladly try to accommodate.
Maybe we'll put it on the agenda for two weeks. Does that sound fair, if you're getting together to debrief this week?
Well, no, I think it's gonna be a couple of weeks before we actually do the debriefing.
Second April meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
Second April meeting.
Yes, we're gonna, I'll work with Ray and we'll come up with a date so that we can all sit down and talk.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify based on what I said, because I don't live in Goffstown, so I didn't know. So, the changes to both elementary schools didn't pass?
That's correct.
No? Okay. A and F?
We didn't meet tonight because we were at the Honeywell meeting. And I think Ray's gonna go ahead and do the manifest when we get to item three.
Okay.
But, we will meet, well, I don't know who's gonna meet. Whoever's on the committee is scheduled to meet on April 1st.
There you go. Thank you.
Those on the committee, stay on the committee until we have a new committee.
Until we have a new committee. Do we have the forms to hand out?
I'm gonna send those out to you.
Okay, thank you.
If you want, I'll sign those now.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
I did wanna, you know, I did receive a, an email today from Ava Lane here at the high school. And we just received word that Jessica Wallace, I think you saw it on the board out front, maybe, received a national scholarship. She's a national scholarship award, art awards, gold medalist, which is huge in the digital painting category for her work titled Last Train Home. There's a maximum of 10 gold medals that are awarded nationwide for nearly 10,000 entries in the category. So, that's just huge out of 10,000.
So, if it's digital, can we see it next time?
Yeah, actually, you know what? I'll attach it to my superintendent's notes because I had it in my email.
That's great.
That is awesome. And, yeah, so they're going, they're heading to, Ava is going to take her, they're going off to New York for the national exhibit and at the end of May for the award ceremony that's held in Carnegie Hall. And that will be.
Good for her.
Yeah, talk about an opportunity out of 10,000 art award winners. So, I will send that because it was, she had a picture of it, so.
That's super. Thank you.
Yeah, so tomorrow might snow, I hear. I don't know.
I'm pushing it solid.
Four inches by morning, I hear.
Yeah, so I'm not really confident on, we probably will have a snow day tomorrow. I'm not guaranteeing it right now, but it's likely for those watching. I will talk about that. And when we talk about the graduation senior notification, I wanna add a couple things in there about snow days. I do have a handout for all board members. It's for new board members, but New Hampshire School Boards Association is again doing their annual workshop for new board members or returning board members, just what's your role on a school board, how you can support the schools, things like that. So, take a look at it. I think it is April 30th, I'm thinking in my head.
Yes.
Yeah, April 30th here in Concord. If you are interested in going, you can send myself or Denise an email and we will register you for it. So, you don't have to worry about registering. Just let us know. We'll get you all registered and set up to go. And then once we know who's going, we'll let you know who else is going. So, you'll know from the three boards who will be there.
I really do recommend it. I've been a couple years, and it's good stuff. It is, it's helpful information.
As we know, the building projects did not pass. I would just encourage the board, as you think about that, is to make a decision early, as early as you can. Again, one of the things that holds us back is when the decision doesn't get made till January. It makes it, it gives us less time to advertise and get the word out. So, the earlier, the better to make that decision, whether you're gonna put it on as an article or not next year, the more time we have to get grassroots and to get people informed and involved. So, again, just time is helpful. I'm gonna start working on the process for the search for the new principal at Mountain View Middle School. I'll put that on the agenda for your next meeting. I'll put together timelines, some thoughts on what that looks like, committee membership, things like that. So, you can take a look at that and we can start that process in an informed, thoughtful way. And so, I'll pull that together for your next meeting.
Okay.
So, between now and the next meeting, I'm gonna email all the boards, the subcommittee information. We have revised the form. Denise and I have been working on to make it a little more user-friendly. So, it will now be one page. And what you will have is all of the committees listed and a little checkbox. Yes, you're interested in sitting on that committee, or no, you're not interested. So, check as many yeses as you can. And then what I'll do is I'll give them to Diane, who can then sort through them. So, take a look at them. If you have questions about the committees, let us know. We can tell you, for you guys, I can tell you what the committees do, how often they meet, when they meet, things like that. Most of them try to meet on Mondays still. We try to keep that Monday night available. So, much for that information coming to you this week. Friday's luncheon was great. We gave a thank you luncheon to the staff at Mountain View and the high school. I wanna thank the board members who were able to be there. I think the teachers really, really appreciated it. I heard really nice comments afterwards, like, thank you, that was wonderful. That was really nice of the boards to do that. So, thank you.
And I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it. My son was sick, and so, I needed to stay home with him. I felt bad for that I missed it. But, I'm glad he's doing well.
I thought it was nice. And then just last, we had scheduled an SAU board meeting for tomorrow night with the weather coming in. We've rescheduled it to next Tuesday. I apologize for anybody who could come last night, tomorrow night, but can't come next Tuesday. I think with the weather, we just, it was smart to reschedule that.
Stacy, can I just make a comment on that?
You can ask the board.
As SAU chair, I actually called, thanks. I actually called the meeting for, to discuss a process for replacing our superintendent. I wanna make it clear, it was not a meeting as reported in the press for meeting regarding Dunbarthen's withdrawal. Just so everybody knows, that was a mistake in Goffstown news this past Thursday. The meeting is now, hopefully will be scheduled for next Tuesday, and it will be to address the replacement of our superintendent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Stacy?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Let Denise know about this?
Yes, please. Okay. Manifest and vouchers.
There's detail sheets going around to each of you. Tonight, we bring to you a manifest valued at $1,823,353.95 for your action. The major items in this meeting's manifest are payroll, payroll taxes and benefit payments, sub totaling $1.1 million. Special education payments for this particular manifest were directed to Crotchet Mountain for student services, approximately $35,000. And we had payments to the provider and to Safeway, both of which are transportation outfits. And the total for those two were just about $16,000. General expenses, we've. just about $16,000. General expenses, we paid Fred Fuller about $29.8K for heating or heating oil deliveries to Maple Avenue, Mountain View and to Goffstown High School during the month of February and early March. Payment to Goffstown Truck Center, about $6,200 for February athletics transportation. McGraw Hill, there's a payment of $13.2,000. This is for everyday math consumables that were purchased for Maple Avenue. To provide light and power for the Goffstown High School and Mountain View Middle School in February is a total of $31,617. And the last item on the list is a payment to the town of Goffstown for sewer services here at the high school, at Maple Avenue and at Bartlett School of $10,100. For the newer members of the board, what we typically provide each meeting is a summary of all of the payments in excess of $5,000 that we've processed for the school district. So those total, those payments for individual invoices and payroll in excess of $5,000 totaled $1,252,000, leaving approximately $600,000 worth of payment activity for invoices valued at less than $5,000.
And if I can insert, we made in the two months of an SAU assessment payment of $157,300. That takes up a bit of the other pieces. And if the new members want, we also have with us a listing of all the individual checks in the front and we have all the individual invoices that go over $5,000. So if you want to take a peek at them before you vote, because I always like to, they're here. And it'd be nice if we knew ahead of time so I can pass it down so that we, you don't have to be out of the vote. So I'll pass it down if you want to see it first. But I will move the manifest of $1,823,353.95.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Second by key. All in favor?
Yes, in discussion.
Do we have discussions or questions?
Yeah, I do.
Hank, you have a question? Did I hear that correctly? No? Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Hank? Opposed? Abstained? Two abstains. Thank you.
The one thing that I would like to add, as much for new member benefit as for public benefit, is in addition to what Dan and Ray described in terms of the review process, there are at least two times a year during which all of the invoices for any segment are reviewed. So that even though we aren't necessarily seeing every time we meet, the review of all invoices below $5,000, there is a periodic review built into the A and F process so that at least a couple of times a year, all of those are gone through.
And do you ever have like a comparison so you can see how this compares to previous months or previous years, just to put it into perspective?
If I can say that monthly, you should now become on the email list where Ray will send out the monthly reports, which will give you the month and the year-to-date track against the budget. So you could take a peek like that. Now, if anytime that you're looking for individual information, I'm sure Ray would be moved and happy to give him a call or even show up and say, I have a question.
Typically, the A and F committee will meet before this meeting and review the manifest so they get more detailed questions and then recommend to the whole board.
So that's the checkbox you check out when it says A and F?
Very interested in that.
And when you see Budget Committee, you check that one too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Those are two easy jobs.
The budget committee issue.
Oh, my heavens. Okay. Onto old business, second read policies.
I'm staying.
We have two second read policies.
Okay.
We lost all last week, the last meeting, the support services goals and emergency closings.
Okay. So we have policy EA, support services goals and E B C D, emergency closings. This is a second read?
I have questions.
So this is for board approval. Go ahead, Dan.
I have questions on the emergency closing. This is what I started two weeks ago, but this is the appropriate time because I was reading through it. One of the things I was looking at, if you look under the paragraph that says announcements and it's underscored, it's a great paragraph because it says, when the superintendent decides it is necessary to lay opening or close any facility or school or cancel any school event, he or she will initiate all related communications to the public by radio, television, website, and here's the one that's gonna give me a little problem, or other available means. Now, what we've initiated in the school, from what I understand, and not just for, for any announcements, which would be for snow closings, is this forced, it's like a push polling kind of thing, where your phone rings at 5:30 in the morning. And that is, from what I understand from two weeks ago, it's opt-out for the parents, but it's not opt-out for the staff. And what bothers me is there could be some staff who have either young kids or spouses who don't have to get up that early, but would be woken up by the telephone. So it's possible to opt-out of a house phone if you have a cellphone, but what happens if you don't have a cellphone? And so a text message. My problem with that is when we, as a governmental entity, push ourselves onto the private, you know, putting it on a paper, putting it on the internet, putting it there. But that's almost like saying, I'm gonna get somebody to knock on your door and say, there's no school today. I think we have enough options without force-feeding this. And that's my problem with it.
What would you suggest to replace that?
I would have an opt-out capabilities for everyone.
How do their children know whether there's school or not?
So let me, no, no, no.
Everybody stop. No, stop. I need one at a time. So if you could please wait to be recognized, I think that will help the flow of our conversation. I, Dan had stopped. Hank did not get recognized, but Hank was speaking. Did you finish your point, Hank?
Simple thing is, if you have an employee and they're not supposed to report to work that day, or in case of some kind of a crisis, they have to report to work that day, how do you inform them?
Okay. Who from over here? I know you spoke. I know somebody else. Was it you?
Diane.
Okay, Stacy, go ahead.
I just, if I can clarify what Dan's talking about. So in years past, we have always had, through faculty, we've always had a snow chain. So everybody has always gotten a call. One person calls, the next person calls, the next person calls, the next person. When we purchased Power Announcement, which is really our emergency response system, so I want to start by saying that, that's what the purpose of that was for. So we could quickly get information out to parents, that we could quickly get information out to faculty if there was an emergency. What we found was that the system has so much value. And instead of calling in a snow chain, because sometimes what happens in a snow chain that doesn't work is one person can't reach the next person, who then calls the next person, and then that next person, the next person never gets called, never gets the information. I have to tell you, I have heard very few complaints about it. In fact, Dunbarton and New Boston Acts to be part of Power Announcement because it was successful. Basically, what we use it for is it makes, it's the same call. I can click in and get staff and students at the same time when I make that call in the morning. So that it goes out to everybody. That's the ancillary plus of it. We have had two people ask that their names not be included in that. I met with Betsy to see if there were options out there. Could we create a second list? Could we do that so that people couldn't, there is no way to create a second list because it comes out right from Power Announcement. This is not a, like, we inserted Dunbarton teachers through a second list. We can't manage to, the number of faculty and staff we have, Betsy can't manage two separate lists and make sure that everything is accountable. So we have told staff that if they did not want the phone call, that they could use their cellphone. But the issue I have with removing them from the system is that if it was a true emergency and there was a gunman here at the high school and I needed 10 minutes before school was going to start to get an email out or message to people to say, do not go to the school, if people were not on that list, I would not be able to get that message to them. So that is really the purpose of Power Announcement. Betsy thinks that with the new revision, there may be some way to set up a second list like that. But right now, with the version we have, we are unable to do that. So it would come down to this board feeling comfortable in that people could opt-out of the list as faculty and staff and not get emergency calls then. That would be, if we took them off the list, that's what that would do. They would not get emergency calls.
Okay, Dan had his hand up and then Ben?
Jenny did too.
Jenny did too. I'm sorry, I didn't see Jenny. Go ahead.
I honestly don't think we're forcing anything on anybody because that any other company or any other employer doesn't do. Because I know frequently, we'll get calls from my husband's work in the morning at 5 o'clock and I'm not real thrilled about it. But I'm sure if I call up his boss and say, you know, you woke me up, they're not gonna be real pleased about, you know, that they're not working or they're starting late because, you know, they do a lot of transporting stuff. So, you know, I don't think this is any different than what any other employee, employer expects of their employees, to be notified when they need to be notified about things. So I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Dan?
Couple of things. One, other employers aren't like a school. Schools have snow days. That's the big thing. Okay?
My husband has snow days too. So they.
Do I have the floor?
You do.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, schools are different because this happens often. So there are different companies. They have to do different things that has that. But you also have the capability of opting out, which gives me to my second point. Back when there was a snow list, you could opt-out of the snow list. And so with the Power Announcement, I am just trying to keep current policy in place. You could opt-out of the snow list. Why can't you opt-out of the Power Announcement? It's the same policy.
Ben?
Well, to Dan's point, a school, I work for the Community College System of New Hampshire and we have MCC Alert, or Great Bay Community College Alert. And on Friday, I think it was, we got a call on our cellphone, our home phone, and an email to the house that this college is going to be closed due to a power outage. And that works at the school. In fact, it is, it is optional. The kids have, the students and faculty have to sign up for it. But it is a great announcement and it's a great situation to have that type of situation. Now, tomorrow morning, I don't have class tomorrow morning, but I know that this thing's coming down at 5:30 tomorrow morning, I'm gonna get a phone call that, you know, the Manchester Community College in Great Bay are closed, which is fine. That does, that's not a real problem. It saves a drive, particularly when I talk, when I teach over enforcement, it saves me an hour drive if there's problems. So I, you know, I think that this is an excellent, an excellent situation. And yeah, it probably could be modified where it's an opt-in, opt-out type of situation. But I cannot see why anyone would not want to stay in this because it is, it is, it is nice. You don't have to get up and watch, you may have just missed, you turn the TV on, you may have just missed the G, you know. And it's like, oh, you gotta wait all, you know, go all through the entire alphabet. And if it's a big storm, that could take a few minutes. And it's, it's just a pain. But yeah, it is 5:30 in the morning. It's a pain in the neck. I agree. But it's also nice that you can say, okay, fine, pull the covers back up and sleep another couple of hours. So not making light of the situation. But again, having worked with this through the Community College System, and this is throughout the state, and it works, it works very, very well.
Megan?
Am I allowed to comment?
Of course.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, like, you're trying to prove the point that this is for emergency uses. And in an emergency, yes, snow days may be an exception that, you know, you might be looking towards, like, is this a snow day or is it not? But in other emergency situations, you're not gonna know to look to any other media. That a phone call is pretty much the only media that you get an announcement, that you can't really ignore unless your phone is off or somehow it's disconnected. Because you're not gonna know to look to the website. You're not gonna know to look to the TV in other emergency situations. So if you opt-out, you just won't know. Rada, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna make a similar comment. I think the off part is the part we should be thinking about because people choose to get their information. And I will say that I'm one of those people that get like startled, a call at 5:30 in the morning, it's like, oh, my God. Kids, of course, love it because they know there's no.
They know it's snowing.
But I think that people, having that option of how you receive it, and I would, I would think that, and I don't know the system that you have, but there, there's gotta be a super user where it, if it's a real emergency, that you can override everybody's options and that, I mean, that should be looked at. But to force somebody, because, you know, I, I choose to look for my information in a different way that I can get it immediately. And the first thing I do is, you know, when it's snowing, it's like, okay, do I have school? Do I have work? And I get it that way. So it would be nice if there were options.
I just want to be clear on, on two points, just so I know that we're understanding this correctly. First off, the issue here is that parents and the general public have the option to opt-out.
Correct.
And Dan's concern is that staff does not, faculty and staff does not. And then secondly, I just want to verify that for you, the policy surrounds being able to reach people, not on a snow day, but in the event of another emergency. Am I clear?
Correct. We, we use it as opposed to a snow chain now. But the purpose of getting Power Announcements was really for emergency purposes. That should there be something that we need to tell people, do not come to the school, and it's 10 minutes before. That's the only way we really have to, to ensure that everybody gets that message, this sort of system like that.
And you do have all kinds of options of how they can get them, right? Like text?
Yeah, for teachers, it's what's in Power School. So it's, it's, I think it's phone, text and email. They all have email because we all have email.
Dan had his hand up.
I agree with the emergency notification. That hasn't been my issue. It's great. Let's get back to the issue. The issue is getting a call on a snow day. Is that an emergency? The answer is, in my regard, no. So if I could, I could ask the direct question, do we use it for snow? The answer is yes. It may not have been the purpose for buying it, but that's how we use it currently. It's for announcements. It's in the announcement section of this policy. It's not in the emergency section of the policy. If you move it to the emergency section of the policy, I'm all for it. If you allow for an opt-out in the, in the announcement section, that makes me happy. But I would agree with the emergency. I would like an opt-out just like the parents. So what's the difference between kids coming to school with an opt, parents having an opt-out, or teachers or staff coming to school that don't have an opt-out? You're still gonna have people coming if somebody has an opt-out. It's either all or nothing. That's, so the argument I can't see because only a portion is gonna get it. So everybody should have emergency. Announcements should be optional. That's, that's how I'm seeing it.
Can you pass it hand up, Ben? You're done?
I'll pass it.
Ben?
Under the present system, is it mandatory that everybody sign in and be on this alert system?
For teachers. Parents can, parents can choose. So we, by default, we put all parents in. I think it was phone and email. And then they could go in and add or subtract text or they could take off the phone.
I see.
For teachers, because we, there's only one way to insert teachers and that was pulling the data out of Power School, which is where all the teachers' data is. And so at this point, if we delete a teacher from the system and say they're not gonna get a phone call, if we had an emergency, they would not get a phone call. So that's.
Then that's a problem with the system.
System, right. And they're talking about in the upgrade, which should be coming, I believe, this summer, there is a potential fix to that.
Because that's what we have over, that's what, that's what MCC has.
Yeah.
That you can opt-in and you, and you can get the, the snow days, the emergencies, whatever.
Right, what you choose, yeah.
When, a couple of years ago, we were, surprise, surprise, I was down in Gettysburg when Hurricane Irene came and we were out on the battlefield. And we got a phone call and a text message that school was gonna be closed. It took me about three and a half seconds to decide I was gonna stay another day and another four seconds to confirm my reservation. But I mean, seriously, that type of situation where these things happen, if it's an opt-in, not a mandatory, then I, I think that's the way it should be, that not a mandatory, then I, I think that's the way it should be, that it has to be, it should be a choice, that if you want to get this announcement, otherwise, and in an emergency situation also. There are situations where we've had, like, the power outage at the school on Friday, we've had other issues that the schools had to be closed because of different situations. People get the announcement, yes or no? And it's, it is, it's an opt-in, opt-out situation. And I think that is something that needs to be looked at, so that it is, and I, Dan, I agree with what you're saying, that if it's an opt-in, opt-out, not a problem for both.
Philip?
Make a motion to adopt the EBCD, emergency closings as presented.
Do I have a second? Motion on the floor is to adopt EBCD as presented. Any more discussion?
Yes.
Dan?
The, what I heard the superintendent say was, there's an opt-out for, for a website or something where parents can go in, but the exact same system you can for teachers.
Correct.
Doesn't make sense to me. I think we should hold the policy, because the answer to your question on current policy, I don't believe was accurate. The current policy was a snow tree. The snow tree had an opt-out provision. Something was implemented that this board didn't necessarily agree with. And that was the answer we got, what was the current practice, not the current policy. That's how I understand it.
My concern with allowing teachers to opt out is not that they would not be notified of a snow day because they ultimately would find out. My concern is if there is an emergency which our staff need to be notified for a safety issue of our students, if they would not get it, that is my concern, because then that would decrease the safety of our students. Ben had his hand up.
Now, you're talking about situations prior to students, teachers and students being in the building, is that correct?
I'm talking about any emergency. My understanding of this situation is, is that the concern for allowing people to opt out for snow days allows them to opt out for all notices on the staff level.
But if they are, if they are here in school and an emergency comes up, is that not notified through the PA system?
It could be, but it depends on the situation. I mean, if we, I, like, don't want to say if we had a shooter in the building, the police department may say, send something through the system because it won't go through the PA, so the shooter knows where we're at. You know, I, I have no idea, there's a multiple way, I mean, you could, you could brainstorm out 100,000 different emergency tactics of how you could use the system, but...
Then you're assuming that the teachers are going to have their cellphones on.
Yeah.
Is that, is, is that good practice?
And their computer.
Is that good practice to have their, have their cellphones on, unless they're on vibrate? I mean, I think...
I guess for me, I look at it as whatever we can do to ensure the safety of our staff and that staff get information.
I think there's other ways of doing that. I think there are other ways of doing that, other than if it's an outside situation before they come to school, I understand. But here in the buildings, there's got to be a better way.
One more comment. I apologize. All set? One more comment, I'll call the vote.
Could we call a vote and see if this is something that the majority is going to approve, or whether we need to send it back to committee?
I agree. We have a motion on the floor to approve EBCD.
Actually, point of order.
Go ahead.
She has a motion to call the vote, which then would silence me if there was a second and we voted to call the vote.
That's right.
You'd have to do it in the process, otherwise than that, I have a right to speak.
Okay.
So she has a motion on the floor, there needs to be a second.
She had a question on the floor about whether or not she could, she said may I.
Oh, okay, so...
If there was no second.
I don't think. Are you calling a motion, Jenny?
I'm calling a motion.
Jenny, call a motion to call the vote. Do I have a second to call the vote? Keith will second it. So all in favor of the motion to call the vote, please signal by raising your hand. All opposed? To oppose, no abstentions. Okay. So the motion passes to call the vote. I will now call the vote on the motion. All in favor of approving policy EBCD as it pertains to emergency closings, please signal by raising your hand.
Jenny, before you do that, Ken, I, I'm not really clear what we're voting on right now when you...
The policy that was sent out, this is the second read of the policy that we've been discussing. Do you have it in front of you now, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Y'all set?
Yes.
All set? Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands.
If I may, make a point of order.
Sure.
Since Suzanne is on the phone.
Yes.
It's required in statute that a roll call be given for all votes. I pointed it out to...
I think you need to, Suzanne, are you still on the phone?
Yeah.
Oh, okay! You've never gone so long without talking.
I say the hands because it helps me see, but you're right. Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Yes.
Rhonda?
No.
Suzanne?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes.
Point of order, is this going to be a recorded roll call vote? By who voted, yes and no?
They all are for our policy.
You're typically right, who votes no.
Thank you. And if you're in the minority, you are able to, according to our past practice, make a comment.
Thank you.
For it.
Would you like to make a comment?
I think that this policy as it stands right now, the, making it, it feels like it's a, you're, you're forcing people to do things that really, I think there are other ways of doing these things, and it should have been, are needs to be looked at in a, in a little bit better way, I think. Having experienced it, worked with it with the snow tree, when I was a, when I was a superintendent and a principal, I had the same situation, and as a teacher. And you're right, the snow trees don't work. Somebody drops the, literally drops the ball and it doesn't happen. This is a good way, but I think there has to be the opt-in, opt-out provision for, for all these situations, and emergencies in buildings can be handled a little bit better than using the PA. You can do things a lot differently. Madam Chair, may I ask a question of our teacher reps?
Yes, Keith, you may ask a question of our teacher reps.
I can give you a story that...
No, no, I actually, my question's a very simple one. Do you folks carry your cellphones with you and have them on while you're here today?
I have them on silent.
Yeah, I have it on silent.
We don't have a policy against that, I hope.
We do not.
Did you have...
We, we intended that they would, for emergency purposes, have it, and that's why I was wondering.
Okay.
Just my own personal case, it, I'm so thankful for that system and being on it and being forced to be on it, because I'm one of those early birds, I'm in school very, very early, and I leave my house before sometimes the, the call is made in that storm where it wasn't determined until the buses got on the road. I was halfway up that dreadful hill in Dunbar, and I got the call. And thank goodness I did what I did, because as it was, I did get turned around on the hill and had no way of stopping until I was almost at the bottom of the hill, with, starting from zero miles an hour. And so it prompted me to trade in my car and get a four-wheel-drive vehicle, literally three weeks ago. So I'm really glad we got that system, because if I'd been any further towards school, it would have been dreadful. I mean, it was bad enough. It did help me.
Thank you. We have policy EA, second read as well, support services goals.
Yep. Doing that forward for a motion that we accept the policy support services goals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Bye, Philip. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mine has in the background, Henry, it says deleted 2/11/13. Have we deleted this?
Yeah.
Is that the point? What are we doing to this?
Proposed deletion 2/18/13 down on the...
Yep. So we're proposing to remove it.
So what was the motion again?
To delete.
Delete. Go ahead.
You accept the, motion would be accept the...
Delete this, if you want to put that away. Okay, so, okay.
Hank, do you know why? Do, do you know why?
Why do you do it?
It's a redundant policy.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was actually another part of another policy, I believe.
Do we know which one it is?
Probably EAB.
Do you have any methodology you can find, if you're a little, like, cop connected to our, little policy...
Actually, Rhonda has her written policies book right next to her.
No, I didn't know where they are.
Dan, if I may, if it's helpful at all, one of the disappointing things and difficult things about going from PRC to the board and having a four-week waiting period, usually, which follows a two-week period, I can tell you that your daughter recommended that we do this.
Yeah.
And we had a really good reason at the time for moving it forward to the board without having those meeting minutes in front of us.
You make a...
I, I have to tell you that after six weeks, I can't possibly tell you with any accuracy exactly why I was.
But you know what?
But if we need to.
Because Laurie brought it forward, I know she did her due diligence.
I believe it is a redundancy, wasn't it, Stacy?
Yes, it definitely would be because we wouldn't delete a policy. I'm guessing it's embedded in another policy.
Yeah.
And perhaps, perhaps the new policy review committee would like to review the way we do policies and not have it so lagging into it.
It's so general, it's covering everything else.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion on policy EA? We have a motion on the floor, President, to delete policy EA as recommended by the HR, the policy review committee?
You're not yelling.
I'm not yelling, I'm sorry, Suzanne. We have a motion on the floor to delete policy EA as recommended by the policy review committee. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor of, and we need a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Ben?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Diane, yes. Thank you very much. Old Business, we move on to Old Business B, the area agreement. Discussion of present area agreement provisions based upon the marked vote.
This is a follow-up from your last meeting, as well as the, I guess I would, at this point, with Dunbar leaving and not voting the area agreement, the area agreement has failed. So you will, the Gothstown Board will need to now meet with New Boston and develop a new area agreement so that it can be on the warrant. And I just, I, I would recommend the board maybe, I know it's tight timeframes, but move as quick as you can while I'm still here to have at least the superintendent be familiar with the process and what has had happened, if you want to be part of that, it would be helpful.
So, go ahead, Dan.
As, as a member of the area agreement that just very successfully passed in Gothstown and New Boston, there were some ancillary discussions during this, what would happen if Dunbar went? And I believe we have a group that was in place that said that area agreement would be a great framework to just go forward with it, and I would suspect that it would take a lot less time than the old one.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
It's just changing the ratio numbers in the finance part.
So what we need is a meeting with New Boston. Are we looking to frame this with the current area agreement subcommittee to initiate this?
Well, that kind of went away when we finished, so we would have to create a new area subcommittee. But should we ask the superintendent to reach out to the New Boston Board to see when they would be amenable to...
I would ask them to put, I sent Wendy Lambert an email and asked her, because she was newly elected.
Right.
To ask that that be added to their agenda so they could identify people who could serve on an area committee.
So to start the process, would Gothstown like me to develop a letter, a formal letter to New Boston requesting the beginning of an area discussion, based on the RSA 195?
I'm amenable to that.
Okay, I'll develop a letter and send it to them. They have a meeting on Wednesday, so I'll get that to them.
Do we have anyone willing to sit on that committee?
I would continue to work on the committee because I have a background, I think probably would be a lot easier than...
And you wanted to continue your servitude.
My servitude, yes.
Unless someone else wants to be a part of it, I don't mind, because I think we can get it done in a very short period of time, rather than...
And I think we're already on board, it makes sense.
Okay, so it looks like you have a general...
She, you got my blessings.
Looks like we have a general consensus of Jenny, Dan, and Philip to continue their work with the area agreement. Stacy will initiate a letter to the New Boston Board.
Developing an area agreement going forward with New Boston.
Okay. That sounds, sounds good. Is there anything else to discuss in this topic?
If I may?
Philip?
Yeah.
You might need to speak louder.
One of the things that is on your agenda tonight is a revisiting of a letter that was presented to the board at your last meeting. I would, for the time being, until such time as we've had the opportunity to sit down with New Boston, say that that is not something that needs to occur. And therefore, entertaining a discussion about that communication is premature.
Okay. I actually don't see anything on the agenda, so I'm...
It was kind of, you was all wrapped up together.
It isn't?
Sure, what you're...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Nope, okay, that's not on it.
You wasted a great speech.
Sure did.
Well, no. It was...
Okay. Single.
I'm not quite, I, I understand the, the topic you were going for. I'm sorry, I said that, but is that something that we'll see probably in a couple of weeks?
I would, I would say so, yes.
Not knowing what it is, I don't have to worry about it for another two weeks.
Yeah, no, it's not on the agenda this week, so, okay. Graduation, senior notification?
So I originally was coming forward to request permission to seek a waiver of one day for our seniors, but now that we have a snow day coming, we have two. So we are actually on the, right now, we are on the Thursday, that, I believe it's the 27th of June. If we have a snow day tomorrow, brings us to Friday. I'd like permission from this board, and I'm going to ask the other two boards permission to establish a schedule where we're going to add a half an hour on to the student day to make up a couple of those days, so at least we can get to maybe the Tuesday or the Wednesday beforehand. I have to work that out. I thought we were okay until the snowstorm, and then I hear maybe there might be snow next week too, and I don't even want to go there. So in preparation for that, I want to, I would like permission to go forward and, and develop a plan of implementation for that, to add half an hour on to the day. I've already contacted the bus company, they can do it easily. So it's just a matter of looking at, I think it's for every, it's every 11 days, we make up a day. So I'll back that up for the end of the year, back, and see where that lands us and come up with a good plan. I've talked to the principals that are in support of this at this time, and so I think, I'd like to move forward with that.
Do you need a motion?
I'd like one to move, so that once, once we establish it, I don't have to, I'll bring it back as an update, but I can move forward with it, and we can get the word out to parents.
I have a motion from Philip. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
From Dan, and Jenny has comment or question?
I have a question. I know we've done this before, but is it an issue with the union, do we need to?
No, they're actually, I believe, supportive of this.
Okay. They just assumed get out early.
Yes, okay.
Yes, they, they were very supportive last time we did it.
So, two questions. One, if we needed a third snow day, this would work with this motion we're doing, so that you can work it and.
Correct, correct. Let me be flexible on it, see how many days.
What can we do and how do we accommodate the half hour? It's instructional time from what I mean.
Correct.
So it's like five periods, 30 minutes, six minutes more per period?
Yeah, so it depends on the school, because every school is a little different. So the high school, last time we did that, added time to each block.
Okay.
The middle school added it on to the end of the day and extended different classes. The elementary schools just had the half hour and just extended, so it depends on, I mean, the elementary schools don't do it, schedule is, at Glen Lake, we added 15 minutes on to each session. That's how we accommodated that at Glen Lake, so it seemed to work well.
And so basically, you're going to come back with us with what it's going to look like?
What it will look like at the end of the day, yeah.
I did think it was successful.
Yeah.
I think everybody was very supportive of that.
Yeah, and we had, we had a ton of professional development for teachers planned for that Thursday and Friday that we were looking at canceling, which is a shame, because we had some pretty good people coming in to work with our teachers, so this would free up those two days for teachers to come in and do some training as well.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? I need a roll call.
Yes.
Hank?
Yes.
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 Diane?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Diane, yes. Okay, thank you. New Business, MS 22 signing.
The MS 22 is the Statement of Voted Budget. We will have it ready for the Board's signature at the end of this meeting tonight.
Because we have to modify the 1100s, the 1200s, whatever we vote on? Because is it by that separate?
It's the, in the same format as the 27 form, by function, and it's a restatement of the default budget that you brought forward at the time of the election.
Okay.
Aren't they fun, Ray?
They are.
You have my sympathies.
Okay. Glen Lake, request for additional wall infrastructure.
Yeah, so this is a request I'm bringing forward on behalf of Leslie. She is asking, and this was actually in the budget this year that I cut, and it was actually proposed in the budget next year that we cut, and I've, I've met with Brian, I met with her, we've looked at the space, and we really need to put some, this is in the therapy room, we really need to put some walls in, because we have that autism program, and it's just, it's really distracting having a number of kids. So she has found the money in her budget, it's a total of $4,800. It'll put a three-quarters wall, just which is if you walk in there now, it's the same kind of wall they have in, in the office, they did a really nice job, it matches, so it looks like a natural wall. And so she is requesting that, and I am supporting that, so I am bringing that forward to get approval to add that wall, to actually kind of make a little smaller classroom within the classroom.
And that is within her?
In her budget, yeah.
Currently.
Which she cut out of her budget for, may I ask?
Um, let's see, $1,800, they took advantage of a two-for-one sale last, in the spring for some consumables for Reading Street, so they were able to get that.
Yay, yay.
So everyday math, they offered a ticket, $1,800 for everyday math, we purchased the E-suites, and they hooked, they were able to hook Glen Lake with Maple Lab, so they didn't have to pay for it, so again, kind of some promo things we got from Reading Streets. She currently has a $500 replacement table that she doesn't need. There was $200 in a repair log, generally, but it was the $2,800 that were the big line items that we were able to get free stuff from Reading Streets, so.
It's amazing how many, how that goes on and on and on.
Oh, we push it.
Free stuff from Reading Street.
Amazing, we're good consumers, and they help us with that a lot.
How much was it again?
$4,800.
$4,800.
And that will meet code.
You said these are like little half walls?
They're like three-quarter walls, they, they go down probably a little lower than like what the, the microphones are.
Fixed structure?
It's, it's fixed, but it's easily removed or movable if we have to. Yeah, we try to make them so we can move them if we have to move them.
If you had to, but if the kids are going to roll into it, it's not going to cost.
It's a fixed structure.
Well, Stacy, there are two-by-four constructions with sheet rock on it.
Oh, then that is a little different.
Well, they're attached to the floor, I mean, I touched Leslie's wall, they're not going anywhere.
Well, I'm telling you, they're two-by-fours, walls with sheet rock, yeah, so I mean, they're there.
I'd like to make the motion that we give Leslie her walls.
Okay, do I have a second?
For $4,800.
For $4,000.
It goes, yes.
Do I have a second, Greta, seconded? Any more discussion?
Greta got her name in a minute.
Yes.
Good job.
Definitely have the meeting.
No, I'm sorry.
Lots of overtime.
All in favor, I need to signal by a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Suzanne? Suzanne?
Yes.
Yes. Keith?
Yes.
Diane, yes. All in favor, unanimous. Recommended budget reductions to meet default.
So I have a multiple-page document for you, made of copies. So I met with the administrative team on last Thursday to look at, I would cut $695,290. And here's how we did it. So I have, if those unfamiliar with the budget, so the, kind of highlighted the blocks, so the 000 are kind of district lines, the 101s are Bartlett, 102s are Maple Lab, 103s are kindergarten, 204 is middle school, and 305 is high school. I will highlight, go down the list, so you know what we're reducing. Basically, this will cut pretty much anything that, there's some staff in here I'll go over. It will pretty much reduce any new purchases, any new supply, I mean, we reduce supplies by 10%, it will reduce any new purchases, any furniture, any new equipment, any new technology. We've cut into some of the technology lines, so, starting at the top, we reduce 5,000 in substitute lines, 3,000 in tutoring, the server for the high school, which is, and he is 8,000. Legal, we reduced by 2,000. Summer boost, which is our summer program, we reduced by 14,000. Professional development, 10,000. The Fairpoint contract, we reduced by 10,000, that's what we believe will be the savings, that's that contract that you guys approved at our last meeting. We believe with going out to bid for electricity, we'll save about $8,000. The Barnard Park track, now here's the contingency piece of that, this is something we went into the town with, agreeing to pay for half, so what I'm going to ask the Board to do is make a motion to approve us spending $25,000 out of this year's budget to pay for the track, and reduce it out of next year's budget. If that doesn't, if the Board doesn't approve that, then we have to put it back in next year, and I have to find another $25,000, because it is something that we agreed to with the town to do, and they've done their half. This is our half that needs to still get done. At Bartlett, we removed 10% of general supplies, the surround sound system, we, again, 10% in special ed supplies, the kitchen that they were looking for, the LEAP program, we cut school-wide assemblies, $100 in media supplies, $1,700 in books, 275 in equipment, some of these are small, hit the highway, big ones, $5,700 to replace tile, $2,000 for abatement. We did leave a little bit of money left in that line, there is some abatement that needs to get done, this was going to take care of it all, but it will only do what we have to. Some maintenance supplies, 1,200 in new furniture, 2,400 in replacement furniture and field trip transportation. At Maple Lab, we're adjusting one of the, because we have a retiree at Maple Lab, so we adjusted the salary for that position, we went from a 16-2 to a 5-3, meaning step 16, track 2 to a 5-3, so it's a savings of 22,000. Regular ed supplies of 4,200, some small lines, $2,000 in library books, $6,000 for the exterior doors, $10,000 for replacement windows, $4,000 for bathroom upgrades, $1,600 for replacement furniture, and $7,000 to repave and re-stripe the parking lot. At Glen Lake, $900 in supplies, $12,000, again, another retirement for, adjustment for a retiree who's retiring, going from a 16-4 to a 9-5, some small numbers, and then $3,000 for ground maintenance. At the middle school.
Let me, was this a fence that we were doing, or was that?
Ground maintenance? No, that was just general ground maintenance outside. I think it was some aeration and seeding of the lawn and replacement of shrubs. At 204, which is the middle school, 10% of regular ed supplies is $6,000, $4,000 for books and print, 3,000 for musical instruments, 1,000 for new furniture, 9,000 for replacement furniture, 3,000 for replacement equipment, $8,500 for the extra hours for the secretary, which I don't know how got through everybody else, but didn't get cut at the budget committee.
I don't know how, because I think it would have.
$1,200 for sped maintenance, supplies, $700, $3,000 for new equipment, $2,000 for replacement equipment, $400 for athletic supplies, $1,400 for replacement equipment for athletics, $1,300 for professional development books and print, 2,000 for media books and print, $600 for principal office supply, 700 for dues and fees for the principal, $400 to $300 for field trips, $7,800 for exterior doors, $2,000 for replacement window shades, $2,900 for shades for lockdowns, $200,000, that was a big part for the new roof.
I have some concerns, because I knew the exterior doors, the replacement window shades, and the shades for lockdown at middle school, and there were exterior doors from Maple Lab as well, that were safety things, and doors that could be knocked open.
Yeah.
Are those things that we could take care of, out of unanticipated revenues at the end of the year?
What, what I've asked principals to do is kind of come up with a list for me of things that were, so kind of a three-part list, what was cut out of this year's budget, last year that we haven't purchased yet, what was cut out of next year's budget, like what's on this list that they feel like they can't live without at this point, that, like a bunch of, you know, the needs of the buildings, and then what are things that have happened over the year that they may need, that hasn't made it in either budget, because things break, that we don't know, that don't get budgeted for. I will tell you a lot of things on this list scare me, because again, we're just, we're deferring, we're basically deferring every piece of maintenance in our schools, in this list.
But these are really safety things, and it's not acceptable to me at all for.
Yeah, so we will be, yeah, and that's one of our emergency management kind of pieces we're looking at, what are all those pieces we need to look at?
And if I were a parent and a teacher, these things would really upset me too.
And we balance, we, I mean, there's, at the high school, there's staffing, we just, it was a balance of trying to maintain, as you know, we've cut teachers, and we have found it doesn't work, we cut the science teacher well, we had to cut classes because of that, and so we tried to reduce the number of staffing and go for the stuff first. Continue on, we had the $200,000 for the new roof at Mountain View, $2,500 for maintenance clocks, $750 for replacement clocks, because we got those this year, $4,000 in ground maintenance, and $3,000 in field trip transportation. At the high school, we're reducing one foreign language teacher.
Ooh.
And that will be, right now, we have low enrollment in our Latin classes, so we'll be, the, the reason for doing this is we'll be able to combine some of the Latin classes, so instead of, and I don't know the specifics, but instead of offering maybe two Latin one classes, there's going to be one Latin one classes. Enrollment is just low in that program, so the other teachers will be able to pick up those pieces, so.
This is in an incumbent position.
Correct. Yeah, so a teacher will be repped.
Can I, Stacy, can I just make one observation too? I know there was a letter in the paper with someone who said that we put too much in our budget, and we would have been smarter to keep the new roof on a warrant article, and I just wanted to put it out there, since we're on media, that we had made the decision to put it in our budget, because if we had put it in a warrant article, and that warrant article had not passed, we wouldn't be able to do the roof, whether we found money for it or not. So I just think that the public needs to know that there was a really good reason behind putting it in this budget, not just we were trying to get a bigger budget.
So going down, tech repairs, $3,000, regular ed supplies reduced by 10,000, 10% is $13,000. Regular ed books and print, 10,000, electronic information, 500. The new office licenses, 11,000, musical instruments, 2,000, two front projection screens, 2,000, graphing calculators, $3,400. Replacement computers, 35,000, replacement equipment, 4,000, replacement furniture, 4,600, special ed, general supplies, 1,000, special ed books and print, 3,000, special ed new equipment, 1,500, special ed replacement furniture, 300, co-curricular supplies, 700, replacement microphones, 800, athletic supplies, 1,800, athletic replacement equipment, 3,000, athletic banquet, 1,000, adult ed books and print, 1,000, guidance supplies, 400, guidance dues and fees, 450, nurse supply, 600, books and prints, 3,000, books and print, 5,000, I hope that was two different sections, but same lines. Replacement furniture, 1,000, microphone stands, 300, printing and binding, 3,000, admin travel, 500, admin supplies, 1,000, admin dues and fees, 1,900, other dues and fees, 500, exterior signage, 3,000, upgrade to bathroom partitions, 6,000, repair to the bleachers, 7,300, abatement and tile replacement, 10, abatement was 10,000, tile replacement is 2200, door lock conversions, 8,500, maintenance supplies, 3,000, and the shed for the tractor at 7,000.
Are the door lock conversions, Stacy, the ones so that they can be locked from the inside?
No, this was, we're actually still looking at those, we actually were supposed to meet with the fire department this morning, and I needed to cancel, but that's, that was for converting all of the, starting to convert the locks at the high school. We have a lot of different locks on all of the doors, so that we can get some more controls on the building.
So that's not the indoor locks?
No, that, that you may see as part of our emergency piece.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still working with the police department and fire department on that.
Were these mostly exterior doors?
Yes, these are all exterior doors.
Megan?
I was just wondering if you had another copy.
You're shy, I'm sorry.
Is there, I, have all the copies gone through?
Does anybody know the code to the copier?
I'm sorry, I thought I made enough.
You share that.
I was one short.
Well, I just thought maybe Sam could go and like dip it in really quickly. Philip?
Do we need to make a decision receiving on these reductions?
You do, because particularly the staffing, because your next meeting you will get contracts, and I need to re-pick.
And the MS 22 needs to be completed.
Yeah.
Ben?
On the first line, the adjustment for the retirement, and the second one for the adjustment for retirement in line 103, salary reduction, does that include benefits?
No, that's just salary. Benefits are, when, when, in Gothstown, because the date for retirement is later than we do the budget, so if somebody says they're retiring, we don't change it, so like in New Boston, their date is earlier, so when we actually produce the budget, we actually can't, in October, we know that somebody's retiring, we adjust the budget down, so that if it was a senior teacher, we can adjust it to a, a middle level. So in, in Gothstown, because we don't get that until potentially December, we can't do that, so these are just adjustments to the salaries, because those people may have been taking a, like that, like those people could have been taking a single health insurance plan.
That would save some money as well.
Right, but we have to benefit, budget something for benefits for whoever the new person is. So this retirement, this is, somebody, we're going to have to fill that position, it's not an open position, we're going to fill it, so we need to have something for benefits, assuming that person will take benefits.
Dan?
There's a calculation that, irrelevant of where anybody comes in, the percentage follows the salary, so it's not health, so we have social security at 6.2%, we have Medicare, 1.45%, and we have the retirement system close to, what, 13%? Yeah. So that percentage could be used to come against those potentially?
Yeah.
So that we could put a door back in or something?
Yep, yeah, and we'll look at all of that now.
Well, I think we have to make a decision tonight, and I agree, that's the question. What do we want to do?
I have a question about the summer boost program, 14,000. What is that looking like? Is that discontinuing the summer boost?
No, there's still money in there, we looked historically at what we've spent.
Okay.
Is that, is that taking away, making it not be a charge to parents?
It's still not a charge.
Okay.
It hasn't been a charge for, I think, three years now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just wondering if that was going to be a change, okay?
Yeah, we'll continue that. Just tightening up what we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it should look identical. We've also been able to use more Title I money for that in the summertime, so that has been helpful.
Oh, okay.
So at GHS, I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
No, that's fine.
At GHS, you're talking about reducing foreign languages by a single position?
Correct.
Does that mean that, in the look across all of the other offerings, that there are sufficient gaps so that you can convert somebody who is teaching one foreign language to a class of another? I mean, will we have less French and more Latin, or less French and able to cover Latin?
Correct, we believe the staff.
Or less Italian and?
Yeah, we believe the staff that are left can manage the, and still have an appropriate number with a good class, with a decent class size. So, what, what the high school has looked at is what their enrollment and classes are, and there's a few classes that they can potentially combine, two classes into one, and still keep it at a reasonable number.
The, the scope of offerings won't change.
Correct. We're still going to offer the Latin 1, 2, 3, we're still, the offerings will not change, it may be that instead of offering two Latin 1 classes, we offer one.
I guess the only observation I'd make is, is that, and I apologize, because I saw these a few days ago, it would have been nice to be able to look at these and sort of see relative to the entire appropriation request, what it meant. relative to the entire appropriation request what it meant. Because these are clearly things that impact students, as, as everything that we do here does, being competitive in the labor market impacts students. Can we, are we in a position where we aren't necessarily tied to the proposed changes but are tied to the number? Can we simply accept the number tonight?
I, I think I, I need at least the staffing piece that you're okay with that, because that's, for me, I need to bring back nominations at your next meeting, so I need to know whether we're riffing somebody or not.
Dan?
As far as that concerned, that's the only point here is the riff, because what happens is we have the capability as a board to transfer appropriations. The problem is, do we want to find something else and pop it in there and leave that there and not do a riff, but the riff is the only.
So I guess I would also add, with all due respect to the board, that this list came from your administrators.
Got it.
Who are doing the jobs.
If we were to only have one Latin class, how would that impact students though? Because, you know, you have to make a schedule.
Yeah.
And if you're not open then, then you're not able to take it, and if it were.
The high school thinks they could figure it out, so they were, I mean, it, it may limit somebody, one person, but that's happened before, I mean, everybody, not every kid gets everything that they ever ask, but we try to match everybody, but there's always a time period where this is only offered at this time or this time, and so it doesn't happen often, but we do every year probably have 20 or 30 kids who don't get a class that they would like to take, just because of their schedule, but we try to do it as much as we can. I mean, this was, it's $700,000.
I know.
It's a lot of money, I mean, it was, it's a lot, it's pretty much, our budget was tight to start with.
It was, we cut a lot going in.
A whole bunch coming in.
I move to accept the recommendation to adjust the budget to what was the default levels.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Phillip, any more discussion?
Just for the record, the default budget number is $36,616,091. Just want that to be written for the minutes, which is the reduction of $695,290.
Do we have any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Oh, God, sorry.
I haven't read my Robert's rules.
Yes.
No. Ben?
Yeah.
Rheta?
Actually, it's our own policy, no, it's the RSA 94.
I've read our policies and it's not in our policies.
It's not the policies, it's in the, it's a statute that allows Suzanne to be of this little box.
Okay, because I know I've read our policies and it's not in there.
It's the right to know law.
Suzanne has voted yes?
No.
No for Jenny?
No.
No for Keith? Yes for Diane? And motion passes.
So can I get a motion, since the $25,000 for the track is in there, to appropriate $25,000 to pay for the field work this year?
Do we know where that's coming from?
I will figure it out, but I believe it will probably be from, from salary or benefit lines from hires that we didn't hire lower.
Is that something we need to do tonight?
No, but it has to get done at some point, so I mean, it's, it's a commitment we made to the town, so.
Well, they got their budget passed. Maybe they could pay for both of them.
All right.
You'll have to go and talk to the slipper about that.
Do I have a motion? Phillip, do I have a second? Hi Hank, any discussion?
I have a question.
I have, the, the motion on the floor is to appropriate $25,000 to uphold our end of the bargain on requiring Barnard Track out of this year's budget.
Can you speak up their end, please?
I can, we have a motion on the floor to appropriate $25,000, it's to uphold our end of the bargain that we made with the town regarding the repairs of Barnard's Park, the track, and the motion on the floor is to find that $25,000 somewhere in this year's budget, as we just cut it out of the budget we asked for for next year. Jenny, you have a question?
Yeah.
Is this an expenditure, expenditure that could be taken out of unanticipated revenues? So that instead of taking it out of the budget?
No.
Use it, no, would have to come out of the budget?
Yeah. Ben?
Sounds good, but I am a little leery of taking just, you know, carte blanche without knowing where the money's coming from. And I would like to see where the money's coming from before, before I vote on it.
Dan?
So since this wasn't going to be coming out until next year's budget anyway, we could hold on this and make a decision in a, in a number of weeks when we actually know where it is. So because of that, I'll make a motion to table this until such time as we can identify where it's coming from.
Second.
Ken, you got a motion on the table already?
Yeah, well, that's a table motion that trumps the motion.
You have to vote on the table motion.
So we need to call for a vote on the motion to table the motion on the table. All in favor of tabling the motion on the table? I need a roll call vote.
Sure.
Yes?
No.
No, Hank?
Yes.
Rheta? Suzanne?
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes, and I have lost count. You have.
Four, five, I think it's five, four.
It was one, two. Motion passes.
I, I will send you an email where we take it from, I will make sure you know where it comes from.
Okay. But we have tabled that motion, no further action is required on a motion that is tabled.
Well, if somebody makes a motion untabled.
Okay, and that may take, happen at any future meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
If it wasn't restricted.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on new business item C? I do not believe so, so we will move along to new business item D, first read policies, policy IJNDB, acceptable use policy, IJNDBR regulations, as well as JJIR objectives of the athletic program.
I think I have copies of them because they were a little thick, I think Hank, you may have gotten ideas already.
Yeah.
So if you, yeah, so if you've already got one, I think some people came and picked them up. I think Ben and Rheta, you may have them in your packets, do they have? Yeah.
And Denise sent these to us in the email?
No.
We've once said we were going to follow up by a, by a hard copy.
There were so many sizes.
Yes.
Is this just one packet?
Just one packet.
All right, didn't come in.
Everybody got them, you want to look them over?
It's the first read, so.
First second read, yes.
They're very nice. Here's the first read, take the acceptable use, Dan, you should be, for me, was this you were on the technology?
If I may, I was able to, prior to the budget season, attend one of the technology meetings, which we, actually two of them, where we started to be doing this out of the technology meeting come forward, I missed the last three because it wasn't during budget season, so I still have some notes from that meeting to compare with this that I can do over the next couple of weeks.
This was presented by Gary, Gary, I'm going to kill his name for all of us. And it was reviewed by the Technology Advisory Committee and by legal, they've already okayed it. And basically, going to no say heavy, the changes, the addition of language to address electronic communications, the addition of a public network and expectations of non-privacy abuse, and minor changes is noted in it. Take, take your time, Dan. Well, you're looking at the athletic.
Well, I'm not sure what I'm looking at yet. Yeah, but, oh, the athletic, that's it, that's, that's pretty, that was so good.
I tried to look at that online myself, but you know, it's a good bedtime reading.
Yeah, the IJNDB, we did get in our email, and the IJNDBR, we did get in our email. Because I was looking at this and I'm saying, holy crow, did that grow.
Yeah, no, JJIR, we did not.
Right, that was different than that.
So this is a first read, so we, no action is required at this time?
But if we have actions, if we have questions of Hank, we can ask.
I'll give you a clue of what was going on on the athletic. Basically, a lot of typos in punctuation. And forms, they were made generic, instead of having a name in it, it was Athletic Director. Page 38 is, there's specific pages where changes were made. Steve Fountain, how do you pronounce that fountain? He was there to go over the flexi, the need to, flexibility around the consequences on page 38. The new language says, "The administration reserves the right to adjust consequences depending on the severity of the infraction." And also, "Willful violation of any of the following rules may result, may result at a minimum in a 20-day suspension." We'll have to look at 38 to find out what that means.
Hank, may I ask a clarifying question, Madam Chair? That's suspension from the sport, not from the school.
Huh?
That's suspension from the sport, not the school.
Exactly.
I just didn't want the PMs to think that we're giving out 20-day suspensions to the school.
That sounds a little harsh.
Yeah.
That could probably be one, if you're here.
And the other one is on page 39, which changed on transportation rules. It was revised to reflect the current practice. It basically is that student athletes must ride on the school-provided transportation to and from all contests, including practices after school, that require the transportation. The student athlete will only be released to a parent or guardian by assigned permission at the event. I guess too many of the athletes were driving their own cars and it's hard to keep track of them, you have the responsibility from school to school.
Madam Chair, personally? Well, I thought it was already not allowed, well, as an athlete, it was my understanding that you couldn't drive the vehicle, that you had to ride the bus anyways.
It was just to, to put it in rules.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought it was like a change.
Make it a rule.
No. No.
You have a question?
Yeah, I, I just want a clarifying question, answer from Stacy. What did you, what did the administrative perceive as the reason to have that in our policies?
To have student?
That they have to take the bus transportation.
Well, it's first, I mean, liability and safety.
I, I just want to run into the record because I had a parent who really questioned that.
Definitely liability and safety.
Hopefully she's watching tonight, she'll get her answer.
Liability and safety is, yeah, it's a responsibility of the coach to know where their kids are, if we go to win a way game, that everybody gets back on the bus. It's also good for the team, I mean, it's a team sport and you drive to the sport together and you come home from the sport together.
Win or lose, you should be either in.
I agree with the policy, but I just wanted to be on the record so someone could get their question answered.
Ben?
It's, I think this is excellent, what is the policy on field trips? Is that, is that the same situation that you, you go with who brought you?
Yeah, field trips are, field trips are transportation as well, there, there tends to be far less parents involved, I mean, there's parents who go on field trips, but others may parents drive.
Yeah, but I think this is, this is excellent.
Parents always have the right to take their own child, but.
Sound of liability.
Actually, can I have another clarifying question?
You may.
Stacy, I thought on field trips that, my understanding was parents can drive themselves, but they cannot take any students with them.
I have to clarify that.
Okay, I thought that was our standard policy.
Yeah, honestly, I don't have a policy in front of me and I have not memorized it.
Because I don't want parents to suddenly think they can go on field trips to drive their kid there.
They usually drive their car behind the bus.
Behind the bus.
Right, they never take students with them, I thought that was, we had a policy not to do that.
They definitely don't take other students with them.
No, not even their own, I thought.
Have fun reading 53 pages.
So Stacy, do we have any other questions about these? Okay, thank you Hank. We are on to nominations.
What?
And I apologize, I don't have enough, I only got nine copies here, so, yes, it is for the board.
And I'll shift from you.
But yeah, so I'm bringing forward a few co-curricular nominations for sports. Colin Burke, who is new, will be varsity baseball volunteer, oh, they're all volunteers, just so you know, at the high school, Deanna Goodwin, girls lacrosse volunteer at the middle school, Catherine Goodwin, girls lacrosse assistant volunteer at the middle school, Jonathan Lopez, high school varsity baseball volunteer, and Scott Turgen, GHS JV boys lacrosse as a volunteer. So I just need a motion to those nominations.
Have they all been, been printed?
If they will be, if they're not, okay.
So moved.
So I have a motion from Keith, do I have a second? From Hank. So the motion is to accept the nominations, any more discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And Suzanne?
Yeah.
Jenny? Keith?
Yes.
Diane?
Okay, then we just have several student observers, which I don't need a motion on these, they're just for notification, we have Hootalia.
Yeah, I'm looking for that one.
Mona Payne, who will be at Glen Lake, early childhood special ed, Kristen Silverman, or Silverman, Sliverman, at Glen Lake, elementary ed, special ed, Samantha Martin will be at Glen Lake as well, doing the same thing, and I'm going to add one, Hannah Smith will be at Mountain View Middle School doing art with Mr. Kilmister.
Thank you. Okay, if any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Dan?
There are three classes from Maple Lab going to the State House, two on April 1st and one on April 2nd. That's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Aren't they going in long?
They, they all go, I think it's a fourth grade.
Yeah.
They all go at some point.
Because I'm downtown and I'm trying to wiggle my way to say hi.
They all go at some point.
Kind of ironically, think it's great, we just cut the funding.
Yeah.
We haven't funded those trips in a long time. I know at Maple, at least, it's made possible by their parent group and then the parents, parents share. Okay, we do have non-public this evening, pursuant to RSA 91A, Poland 3, Roman 2, but I don't.
A dismissal, promotion or compensation of an employee.
Can we sign these before you go into non-public?
Sure, so we'll take a few moments to sign the MS-22 prior to going in to non-public.
We have, we'll have to vote on two.
Vote on going into non-public? I knew that, but I thought we best not vote until we do.
Ray interrupted the process.
The rotten Ray. At night.
Madam Chair, is there any special spot? No? Oh, okay. Just want to make sure I didn't take up the spot.
Here's an extra.
Thank you. Have a good night, you two.
It'll be an easy day.
I'll call you in the morning.